It's seven o'clock, right on the dot, so let's get started. I'll officially call the June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen meeting to order. We have, we'll let the minutes reflect that all of the board members are in attendance. In addition to that, we've got a number of members of the town staff, and we have a couple of gentlemen in the audience. And that will be either listening in and at a later date, one participating. So with that, we have the June tenth, two thousand and fifteen minutes before us. Would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes?
I'll move.
It's been moved.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Any discussion? I see no discussion. The minutes will stand approved as written. Thank you, Lisa. Monthly reports are all in and accounted for. We have no public hearings this evening. And we do have two guests. Our first guest is Mr. Bill Vendell, twelve seventy-one Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. And with that, if we'd asked Bill to come join us at the table. And Mark, I'll let you do an initial kickoff, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Mr. Vendell lives on Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. He's been working with PRC to come up with some concepts for his property. He's just south of the Abington development. He's kind of come back and forth with us. He's been working with BME to do a couple of different sketches for him. The copy I just passed out is more of the cluster plan of what he's looking to develop. There is a conventional plan that shows the number of lots, you know, that he could develop out of that, but is looking to develop the back part of his property, which would then tie into the stub that was left in the Abington development. This parcel was considered for development at that time. There was a portion of those Abington lots that were made larger at that point in time that were abutting to Mr. Vendell's property. And looking at that, and he's mirrored that similarly in Bill, I'll let you kind of take over on that, but mirrored it similarly showing the smaller lots on the other side that would abut the Abington piece. Those, I know that developer, you know, if, when this moves forward would be interested in re-subbing his lots to match those at a smaller size, which would match the rest of his development. And then Bill has shown the southern lots to be larger as they abut, you know, the zoning of the property to the south, so.
Is this the whole property that you own or just what you want to develop?
Well, I want to retain the front five acres where the farm marketed, the greenhouse, garden center, and sell the back twelve.
As we say, Bill has, you know, been doing some concept sketches and some ideas and just kind of wanted to float those by the board, see what the board's thoughts were before he got too far along down the road and too far into, you know, expenses paying.
No, it's the right, obviously the right thing to do so that, you know, we minimize, you know, expanding, you know, dollars and cents on engineers and lawyers and things like that because they cost a lot of money. Gives us an opportunity to kind of look at and talk through some of these types of things.
PRC did generate some basic comments, those conceptual, those were emailed out to the board last week. Here's, I'll put a couple, just kind of some overall concepts, talking about stormwater, talking about traffic, some other, you know, just kind of points of discussion.
Mark, what is the conventional zoning? What would it yield, R2?
Um, it's R2, I believe they had slots, one being the existing farmstead. So keeping the existing farmstead, and I think there was some adjustment needed in that, so it would be down to seven lots.
Seven lots?
Would be the, under the current zoning. And then, I believe you're looking for incentive zoning application similar to what was done with Abington. Was to do, rehearse those lot sizes, match up similar to what Abington sized lots were. BME was the engineer for Abington as well. Bill's been working with them to come up with some concepts of what could be done. Keep his farm market in the front, continue to operate that, and then possibly sell off the back part to a developer and have that built out.
You know, tie into Abington?
There is a current stub there right now, so that was considered at the time that Abington was approved. Would be further development to the south. There is a stub that's there right now. Utilities are stubbed to the property line. So sanitary is at the property line. Storm, you know, he's showing a concept of a spot that it could be put on site. I said, I think that's just kind of a placeholder right now, but at least an idea that it's shown on the plans.
You did require that as a board, as a motion of approval.
And it looks like then, just a snapshot of the PRC comments, that they're, you know, pretty specific. You know, it's not general concerns regarding the concept in and of itself. It's just more down the road concerns, storm management.
Yeah, we figured the concept was up to the board as early as we wanted to consider that. But we kind of went off of, okay, if it's like Abington and it's something similar, we kind of got into more site plan layout details, leaving the overall concept to the town board's discretion.
And Bill, did you see the PRC comments yet?
I was at the meeting.
Oh, okay, so you were, all right, just so that you're aware of what some of the things they were percolating.
So what are we, have we gotten to the point where are we looking at patio homes? Are we looking at, what are we looking at in the unit?
Patio homes.
Patio homes? Roughly the size of each one of the parcels? Obviously some are bigger than the other. Is it point two acres? Is it point, point two-five?
Were they one sixty by seventy?
Yeah, the ones that abut Abington are one sixty by seventy. And then you've got.
Then the deeper ones.
You get some deeper ones that are on the south side of the proposed road.
So they may be hundred by two hundred.
I was gonna say, if you look like to be pretty close to hundred by two hundred, that lots fourteen through closer to.
Through nine from fourteen, I guess.
One, and I think that's what we're required of Abington, the southern lots on Re-Neufeld's development were made larger as they abutted to Mr. Vendell's property here.
And then access through the stub road?
Would be a cul-de-sac on this piece. There isn't other stub that's not shown on this plan that's at the end of Abington that stubs to the properties to the west. So it could be connected through to additional parcels to the west of this as well.
And I think that was part of the.
So no access, no direct access off of two fifty?
Not shown on this plan here. We're trying to keep the farm market.
So farm market in the five acres, plus or minus, that kind of stays whole and separate and part of the, part of the current operation. And the back twelve has twenty, has twenty-seven, twenty-seven proposed lots is what we're looking at. Okay, all right.
I ask that only because I think just the whole landscape of the farm market in your house is a nice, it's almost a buffer in of itself to this. And retaining that, I think, is aesthetically nice.
So we know, we know to the south of the Vendell property is Falvo Funeral Home. And then right behind your property, I think, behind, behind Abington and to the west, so to the west of them would be the Clary property.
Yeah.
To the west of you, is that, piece of that's Clary as well?
It's like partial Clary and partial Berry.
Berry, okay, so that's the Berry, yeah, so the, yeah, got it, okay. All right.
Right about where lot fourteen, the boundary line to the northern one, that's where Berry's land starts.
Okay, so everything to the north is Clary and to the south of that is Berry?
Right. I'm not sure if the Falvos have any interest in doing anything at this time, I'm not sure.
They did have a concept plan for three lots back there at one time.
Yeah, I think there was a couple of.
I thought it was five, but.
Where were the trees at?
But they haven't shown any interest at this point in time of doing anything else.
But that could change in a heartbeat.
Okay. All right, any discussion on the incentive component at all? Has there been any discussion either with Bill yourself?
We kind of shared some of the initial stuff that Abington value levels, that stuff. But, you know, kind of not trying to get too far down the road, you know, with Bill. We said, why don't we get into the board before we get too far down the road.
You know, from a concept, from a concept standpoint and what have you.
And as they move forward, you know, if it goes to that level then start talking about, you know, what the incentives is or what that could be.
Got it. Bill, you looking to do this yourself or you haven't sorted through that at this point?
I, no, I wouldn't do it myself.
Okay.
Whoever, whoever bought it.
Got it, so you would, you would.
Well, it's currently zoned with a two acre, there's no, there's not any interest in two acre lots. And there's no value, you know, for the builders. They don't want to come in and put all the infrastructure in for only seven, six or seven lots.
Yep.
You want to tee it up to market it.
Yeah. Just trying to do some planning ahead of time. I can do it all at once when I'm done and just see how the chips fall or I can do some, you know, planning and kind of directing it maybe a little.
Yeah, got it, okay, all right. Mark or Cos, anything, anything unique about this particular piece of property that we should be aware of by way of any wear metal features or any other sensitivity that we should be aware of?
I did have one comment on the back piece, at least it shows the possibility of federal wetlands in that kind of wooded area. Obviously that would be something that would need to be.
Kind of that southwest corner, if you will?
Obviously that would need to be delineated out and determine exactly where the, where.
The federal wetlands is like a right at lot ten, nine, ten, it's a half circle.
Yeah, so that would be something that needs to be delineated, you know, as we get into it and take a look at that.
Can you see it here in the?
Cos, does this follow, actually, does this follow, does this follow to have that higher density movement towards higher density?
That's how we got to Abington, basically.
Yep, okay.
And then just a little unique thing about this property is Bill obviously still wants to run the farm market aspect of it, and he needs five acres to do that.
Right.
And the way they had broken the lots, I think he was off by one tenth of an acre for one of the two acre lots. So theoretically, theoretically, and I guess they have to do a better survey just to find out, but theoretically they might need a variance if that were conventional setup for one tenth of an acre. If he were to keep the farm market functioning by code.
Yeah, I'd like the farm market to stay open. I just, you know, to keep the atmosphere out there.
Yeah. Well, I'm hoping to find someone, but.
Hell, you got another forty, fifty years left, don't you, Bill?
Yeah, I'm hoping.
You're gonna work yourself in the ground, yeah?
You're just.
I got one good and he.
You're just, you're just a young fellow. All right, okay, other questions for Bill or other questions for the staff at this point?
No, and as we've talked to you, we are in the process of preparing some information for you. We've already sent potential incentives.
Right.
I think it was a wise, wise idea to at least, you know, get something down and visually take a look at it.
Yeah, no, I absolutely start to have, we start to have the dialogue and what have you, so. Okay, so we'll, we'll, you know, this will be held on, hide him on the agenda, Bill. We'll certainly stay connected here over the next handful of weeks. Anything additional for us we should be aware of as we're, as we're kind of thinking through this and working, working through this that we should be aware of?
No.
Okay, absolutely.
Bill, have you, have you get any builders approach you about this property? Or are you looking to get it in a position where it's on paper? It's, you know, something that you're going to take out and approach builders to take a look at?
Yeah, I haven't been approached yet.
Okay.
Rudy has shown some interest.
Yep.
But just.
Makes sense.
Trying to do a little value adding.
Yeah, thank you, okay, thank you.
Cos and Mark, can you, I mentioned earlier the PRC comments, can you make sure that he has a copy of?
I give Mark a copy, I'll make sure you mail this out as well.
Just so, you know, you're aware as you ask, go forward.
Those are just some initial reaction as we get into design type stuff.
Right.
Just things to keep in mind.
Down the road we would get into.
Well, the questions are also just the BME would be responding to some of those.
They would be more technical, we're talking about con design and stuff like that, which is kind of discussion points for the board just in consideration if we do move forward, things we would be looking for.
Okay, all right, good. Bill, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, have a good evening.
You too.
Keep things dry, will you?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I got a call today from Mr. Reddish who has to go to a grand opening, I believe, tonight for the hotel downtown. He was gonna send Julie Urhart. Is she, there she is.
Hello.
Your timing is affecting.
I guess she did.
She was talking about you.
Yeah, my ears were ringing.
So, no further ado, we have Julie Urhart here to talk to you tonight. Julie had come to me a while back along with Jeff and requested, basically they'd met with you and had a public hearing at one point in time regarding extension of hours of operation for the outdoor dining area. And they had asked the board, at least talk to them about where the board is with the proposal and the next steps.
We're still reviewing it, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
And then you also indicated to me that, actually Jeff indicated to me that you are interested in having acoustic music during happy hours?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Maybe you want to talk a little bit about that as well?
We are under the understanding that we're allowed to have three special events per year. So we wanted to use those for having someone come in and just do acoustical music.
Three times?
Yeah.
And what she's referring to for the public is there's a special recreation permit that others use throughout the community. For instance, T-Bones does that. Humphrey House did that for years. I got the impression when I was talking to Jeff that it was more of a situation that you wanted to do it on a more regular basis?
He wanted to start doing it but didn't want to get fully into it until we have an understanding if it, you know, this person will draw a crowd, if, you know, it'll be heard, where we want to have it, whether it's outdoors, indoors, things like that. So we kind of wanted to use the three as like a test run.
Yeah, I think it's smart.
And so the three, you would use just three for this year, for this season?
Yep.
And then based on, you know, what she saw heard, then you would look at doing something more active in two thousand and sixteen?
Yep.
Is that what the?
Yep. Our other two locations do have a couple bands pretty frequently. They're pretty successful, so we just want to see if it'll.
Outside?
No, they're indoors.
Julie, when you say acoustic, what do you mean? Is like somebody on a guitar with?
Yep, it's not going to be amplified.
Yeah, okay. They're not plugging into any cameras, are they? And you, you aren't telling them to have music inside, you realize that? But this is strictly on the outdoor patio.
Yeah.
And the hours that you would anticipate?
It would probably just be during the happy hours, you know, between four and seven or four and six or.
And what happened to the permanent awning that you were going to build?
We're still working on it. We're getting some stamped drawings put together. So we can get that permanent squared away.
That is an issue though that's come to bear, and I think you may be aware of it, maybe not, but Jeff has been working with us. The state code does require that to be sprinkled. And I got the impression from Jeff most recently that he was losing interest in doing that if he had to have a sprinkler.
I'm sure.
So I'm not so certain that he will see that there.
And for me, I'm fine, and it's a business decision on his part.
Yeah.
And, you know, you got to weigh what the pros and cons are based on the cost and what the value is of the overhead, so.
Yeah, whether, or whether there's an alternative for.
Right, I would have faith that Jeff would make a business decision whether he wants it or not. And either way, it's up to him.
The alternative to that was having a temporary awning, you know, from like Kohler awning or something that we could take down during the winter months but still have out during the summer.
And that is something you should talk to the building department about, that may be a different situation.
Yeah, that might, that might be attractive too. Striped or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's better, it doesn't block the sunlight coming into the restaurant if you don't want it to.
Right.
Okay, so on the, on the music, you know, for the three times, you know, there is a, you know, permit process to do that. And so, you know, certainly we can, we can work with Mr. Costello and, you know, take a look at, you know, from a code standpoint as part of the, you know, temporary recreation permit. And then depending upon how that works out, then there can be a broader discussion about, you know, what that might look like in two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
After you've taken a look and reviewed that. And so the board will, you know, continue to review, you know, the awning piece. And it sounds like Jeff is kind of working through that and looking at some of the designs and what have you. And based on your input from the state building codes, Cos. And then the board, you know, has been and will continue to review the hours of operation and close that out here in near term as well.
All right.
All right.
And just for the board's information and the public, three times that she's proposing they are permitted as a permit process, if their intent is to come back and do this on a regular basis, you did set ground and support them and they have to come back for a public hearing. Jeff is aware, and I know Julie's aware of it too, that they have to come back for a public hearing to rectify that situation.
What dates are you looking for?
We don't have anything in mind as of yet, we just kind of wanted to feel it out.
Yeah, it's no different than any other restaurant, you know, asking for that type of.
Or business that might be looking for, you know, some special that for, you know, either a holiday or grand opening or anything like that.
Appreciate that as well.
Yeah. Good luck with it.
Thanks.
All right, board, anything else for Julie before she leaves?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Staff, anything else? Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You as well.
Okay, we'll move into our action items. Our first item is South Point Co. Pump Station Agreement. Mr. Valentine, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Here's a letter from Pastor Associates, and they're asking for some slight modification to the agreement that's currently in place. As was stated in the original agreement, it basically states that for the pump station that they're required as part of the development to put in online is a booster pump to our existing pump that's down there, that no building permit was to be allowed for building number six before the pump station was open and operational. They are asking for the clarification or the change to that agreement to say that no certificate of occupancy can be issued for the sixth building before the pump station is open and operational. The sixth building they want to build, there's five buildings under construction right now. The sixth building they want to build is the condo building that is closest to the Eagle's Nest. The issue with that building is, is the timing that typically July to December is the construction season they can build that building in based on the nesting season of the eagles.
Right.
So they've submitted a letter and request for this board to modify that agreement. So no CVO would be given, there would be no sewer flow going to the pump station. That was the original intent of the agreement was, we can't build ten buildings, put it on the existing pump station without having some issues to it. They've detailed out, obviously they'll give us the letter of credit. They'll have the money and the guarantee, you know, that we have the money for it. No sewer will be flowing there, there's currently no sewer flowing on any of the buildings right now, even though the five buildings are all in different levels of construction. There's been no significant changes to the drainage or to the sewer district of what's flowing to it. And then they would have it up and operational before that CVO would be issued for the sixth building. So they're just asking for an adjustment to that agreement. They did provide a sample copy of what would be that adjustment to the agreement. Council has a copy of that, here's a copy of the letter. They did want to bring it back to this board as it is a change to what your original resolution required.
It's just based upon working around the eagle?
That's what, I mean, that's, on their end, it's a timing issue is, you know. The CVO, they're okay with getting the pump station up. We do have shop drawings for the pump station, so it is in process. It's not a thought down the road, we've been getting shop drawings along the way. They have stuff ordered, it's coming in. We have a letter of credit estimate, they're posting that shortly, they're working on that with the bank. We've had meetings about that, so that is in process, it's not a future thing.
Doing downside on this?
If we don't issue a CVO, nobody moves into the building, no additional sewer flow goes to the pump station. And that was the original intent was to not overwhelm the station that's there now without having this back up in place.
The overarching goal is to get things moving.
Yeah, but, but it is obviously, you know, a change to what the original agreement was and a change to your resolution.
There's somewhat of a bit of change of circumstances, I think, that we can hang our head on that.
Yes, as Linda said, it is the timing of when you can build it, building closest to the Eagle's Nest to making sure they get into that tight window.
The only, the only thing that I asked was that the agreement include either temporary or final CVO. Because, you know, the sensitivity always is, is that you can have a temporary CVO for a pretty significant period of time before a final CVO. So that was the only wording that I'd asked to have in there. And then with, with the exception of that, you know, review with staff, review with town attorney, felt comfortable with that not violating anything by way of, you know, the overall approval process that we had.
That's a good catch.
And I did share that with Pastor, I sent it off to them and said, you know, at the very least, this is the one additive we want. Then obviously put it on the board's agenda for every discussion.
Okay.
So everybody, everybody's okay with that? All right, then we will, so note that, close that loop back with that. And then once, once the agreement is blessed by the town attorney, then we will have that signed out and open that, okay? Great, anything else, board, staff? All right, we'll move on to Parkview, number two, Parkview White Village Construction Stakeout. Again, Mr. Valentine.
Yes, thank you. As we get into the construction project, I've attached what was the original, on top is the original resolution authorizing not to exceed number. The second is a new proposal for construction stakeout. And then the attached last page is actually what the original contract was. So it details out what was included in the original bid, what items were included that. There is an additional service for construction stakeout. We did get a quote from them for fifteen thousand nine hundred dollars to do the construction stakeout throughout the project. But I say that is an additional service, so it is above and beyond what was the original resolution that this board authorized for that construction project. So again, wanted to bring it back to the board as it is an add-on to what was in there, was contemplated as the original piece. I believe you can see on page six of the contract, item H, under additional services furnished, construction stakeout. So it was contemplated, it was in the original thing, known that it would be an additional service at that time. We look at some of the other stuff as ad built and whatnot. I think some of that stuff we can handle in-house ourselves through the contracts. Mark DiFrancesco extended his contract and some other things that we can save some additional costs by handling some of these things in-house. But since we don't have the expertise in in-house to do that survey stakeout, it would be something that we would need to file out.
Yeah, so what, so we got to bid for that?
No.
What are you saying?
It's under professional services, so, I mean, we have that, but.
So it's still under.
We need a resolution.
It would just need to be another resolution because this board authorized not to exceed number.
Right.
This would exceed that, so it would need another resolution authorizing these additional services.
So originally the contract that we signed in November of two thousand and twelve authorized the, you know, the design work and getting the permit applications completed for DEC and everything to this point to let the contract sell. As contained in that November two thousand and twelve letter, now we're at a point of doing a stakeout for construction. And so we went back, asked for a quote for that because that was identified as a separate amount for the project. So they've submitted, engineering has reviewed what is being proposed, it does seem reasonable. But because it is a, above and beyond the original contract, town attorney recommended us, once the board approved that, then to do a resolution authorizing me to sign the contract for construction stakeout, so. Everybody's good with that or any other questions that anyone might have? Okay, so Mark will proceed with a resolution for our July first town board meeting for that construction work. And then I think by way of. And then I think by way of just an update for the board, I think construction is looking to start here, sometime here early in July.
Yeah, as soon as we get the resolution, the surveyors can be starting thereafter staking it out, and then we'll be starting construction quickly following.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the incentive zoning, 1080 and 1092 Penfield Road. And since our last meeting, the reason this is on is that we did, in fact, receive some comments from the P R C. This will give us an opportunity if we have any questions of the P R C or members of staff regarding P R C comments to help the board continue to look at and review this particular application.
Thank you, Tony. P R C did look at the proposal. I think generally speaking, the P R C feels that it might create a nice transition from the business non-retail use, particularly the Dolmire corporate headquarters to the east, and then our property to the west, which is basically vacant property. Some of the concerns that arose through the process though were the fact that the plan that we originally saw, when we first met with the applicants, was substantially different from the plan that you saw with respect to setbacks, particularly through the town property to the west.
Yeah, that's dramatic.
And they are like a five-foot setback, if I'm not mistaken, which really doesn't even take into account any type of patio areas or personal recreation space, which would obviously abut our property line. There are some design features in that project that P R C was concerned about, particularly, they recommended that the house be eliminated, which would now allow for them to relocate buildings away from our property, but also probably give better layout in most cases to the site. Obviously, things such as stormwater management have not been addressed yet, and that's, that's understandable, but that kind of a situation may lead to less units than what they're proposing at this point in time, so.
Well, just the size setback alone, it looks like that's
Well, they may be able to adjust for that, but I think it's a situation where they have to be more realistic about the number of units that may be able to sit on the site and sit on the site comfortably. One of the units is approximately fourteen feet from the front property line. It doesn't mean it's on the macadam surface, but it is fourteen feet from its front property line on Penfield Road.
Right on.
And to us, that, that's substantially
A lot of variances with it.
Well, and I wouldn't even recommend variances for something like that. They, they need to reconfigure lots. They need to make them more, you know, more palatable for the neighborhood. And so, those are the kinds of things that are coming out, but I think design features are something for us to look at. It may have merit in terms of its use for the site, but there are some things that they have to look at.
It sounds like we may need to take another crack at it after they take a crack at it.
Yeah, and I know this board's been very good about not requiring developers to spend a lot of money on it, but still, there, there has to be some reality to the plan, so that you have something to look at and give you an indication that you might be going to accept something like that.
Setbacks is a fundamental
It really is.
They're seventy-five feet over the variance. Now, at this point, we have not shared P R C's comments with the applicant yet. We just sent them just to the board as, you know, just to, again, a point of conversation for the board. Obviously, there's an incentive zoning application, you know, setbacks can be adjusted, you know, those things can be modified through your approval process. You know, it doesn't have to be, you know, exactly, it doesn't have to go to the zoning board. Obviously, the town board can handle those, you know, through your approval process, but those are some concerns that were shared by staff, that five feet seemed a little excessive from an eighty-foot per the code, down to five feet, as Jim shared. If people want to put a little patio out back or have a grill or something, you're very close to town-owned property. It was purchased with open space money. It's supposed to remain open and, you know, unobstructed, and, you know, now we're putting some development very, very close to that. Had some concerns, and then with the setbacks in the front, originally, they talked about a little bit more of a transfer to the residential character, pushing it back from the road a little bit to kind of match with that, and fourteen feet seemed a little, a little close to kind of help with that transition.
Creating a buffered entrance area to the project would be more compatible with
So, so what I would say is, what I would say is this, you know, as, as I, as I take a look at the comments that P R C have come up with, I don't think there is anything there that jumps out at me as being what I would call unreasonable or unrealistic. I, I think that it is appropriate to send these now back to the developer and have the developer take a look at those and certainly, you know, look to, to make some appropriate level of adjustment. And, and again, certainly, we're not, we're not necessarily looking for anything more formal than what he submitted the first time, with the exception of taking into account these comments about E Pods and making sure we're dealing with E Pods properly and dealing with, you know, the setback component and what have you. And it may in fact show a different layout with some number of less slots, but I think it is something that they have to take into account, and I think it's consistent with, you know, where this board has been with a number of other projects.
And we will convey that to them.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And thank you for the first cut, certainly, you know, if this were to move forward, this may be one of many cuts that the P R C, but I think this is, this is a good opportunity to identify, you know, maybe some next steps.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, we'll move on to the rezoning, amended zoning at 7:30 Linden Avenue. This is the Forest Lawn Mobile Home Park, and Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Tony. A little bit of a different situation, but P R C did look at this site. There are some minor things that we're concerned about, and I think the board, the board brought the same kind of questions up at the same time the P R C did the last time they met with the applicants. Obviously, access around the buildings for, for emergency response is imperative to us. We would recommend that. They are talking about putting some type of a buffer. They said a big white fence. Obviously, a big white fence is not the most attractive thing in the world, especially if it's going mile after mile to cover something. So, obviously, there's going to have to be some landscaping, but process put involved in this whole process here, so that's one other issue. And really, the other issue is just displacement of people that are there currently, how that's going to function properly, so nobody's left out in the cold, obviously. One of the issues that came up, as you know, we've talked about, is the fact that the other park that he owns, that he was going to relocate everybody to, is in a different school district. We have made him aware of the fact that there are some vacancies at the one immediately adjacent to him, the Harper Park. I think that they're going to talk to Mr. Harper about the possibility of relocating for people that want to stay within the Penfield School District and that be an option. So, it appears that, you know, the good things coming out of this are, number one, it's not spot zoning. There's MR District immediately abutting it. There's good transition zone between this site and the properties to the east, because they're limited industrial, zone limited industrial. So, you know, it may mean they want consideration for a public hearing to see if it comes up.
Okay. I'm, you know, I won't, I won't speak for the entire board, you know, at this time, but what I'll, what I'll say is, is that, again, I appreciate, I appreciate the input and feedback from P R C. I'm not sure that myself personally, I'm ready to take that next step for public hearing. I think I would prefer to have a little bit more opportunity to, to review and have some soak time of this project, and I would, I, I would at least suggest another work session before the board make that final decision. Again, I'm going to speak for myself.
I would agree with that, Tony. As a matter of fact, I would be interested to hear how the discussions go with Mr. Harper about relocating.
Yes, I could add some parallel.
So, before I am comfortable with a public hearing, I'd be interested to hear how those
Yep. Please understand.
Everybody else, okay, in that, with that direction at this point? Okay, so, we'll look to have it on our agenda for our next meeting, which would be on the eighth of July. Okay? Okay, Cos, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and staff as well, and P R C for that. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number five, easy pass, on-the-go program. We, we heard from the town clerk two weeks ago regarding an easy pass program and looking to have that available here at the town hall. And part of the, part of the, part of the pitch was that this makes, makes it available for residents, and, and there is some small revenue that could come into the town if, in fact, the board so chose to, to move forward with that, so.
Well
Thoughts, ideas?
I, I just two thoughts. I, I think the first one is that I don't know if whatever potential revenue generated from this project or this program would outweigh potential burdens to the staff currently there or complaints or burdens to your office. The way I would look at this is, once you start offering easy pass, you become the easy pass complaint line, for lack of a better way of putting it. It's just the way it is. So, I, I, I think that it would, you know, I don't think the revenue that would be generated is going to outweigh the burdens that would be placed on the office and current staff. And then, second of all, as a non-essential, non-mandated service, I, I don't think that we need to be weighing into non-essential, non-state mandated services. I think we have enough to keep us busy as far as town government is concerned, and I'm not a fan of big government, so I would say that let this go and, and just kind of keep working on what we are required to do as a town government. Those are my two cents.
All right, thank you.
I think we explored, as we discussed previously, you know, what type of need there was and where there'd been a demand, and we were told that there were three people so far who had inquired or asked about the possibility. I just don't see a real, it being a real hot item of need for people, and certainly, it's not a matter of convenience like we do, say Passport Nights and D M V. You know, there are limited places that you can go and have that done. As we, as we peruse the easy pass website, you just plug in Penfield, New York, and there's a bunch of different locations where they're available, including online. And so, I think that I would concur with Rob, but also see that, you know, we don't have a particular segment of our residents who are not, not having access to it, to this service that is provided through the, through way authority.
Okay. Any other comments?
All right, CNN, so at this time, it sounds like that we will not, we will not move forward with the easy pass program based on opportunities online and other locations across the community. And at this time, this will be a no-go.
Okay? This will take us to operational permit and fire inspection fees, and I, I will take a moment and speak to this. I did follow up, have a conversation with the fire marshal on this item. There were two, two items that were discussed. One, which was taking the, the fee from the current operational permit fee of fifty dollars to seventy-five, upon review of that and further discussion with the fire marshal. Believe that it is appropriate to keep that at the fifty-dollar mark. The, the only thing that, that I would recommend to the board that we take action on is that in the, in the current wording, you know, it talks about an operational permit fee. Would like to expand that to an operational permit slash fire safety inspection fee. Leave it at fifty, leave it at fifty dollars, move it in, in that particular direction, because then that makes that wording consistent with the New York State Uniform Code wording, and we don't have, you know, two different components. So, the fee remains fifty, and we expand the wording to add fire safety inspection fee.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
All right, so we'll put the, the proper resolution together for that and leave the permit fee as it is. Okay, that, that takes us through action items. There are no information items for this evening, and there being no further business to come before the board. The meeting will stand adjourned at 7:45 P M. Thank you to staff, board, and those that have joined us this evening.